Okay. This is the Andover Planning and Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, February 20th, 2018. We'll start with the roll call.
Oh, sorry. Stephanie Gillespie.
Lynn Heath.
Phil Schnaber.
Brian Lindaback.
Gary Israel.
Eric Peterson.
All right. And we have some minutes to approve from the January 16th meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look through those?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And we also have some minutes from the subdivision committee from February 13th. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, January 16th, Andover City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and also the Andover Planning Commission Subdivision Committee meeting on the 13th of February.
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The, we have our usual committee communications. We have our development review. Anything else new, Les, other than what we see here?
Nothing new, other than to welcome Eric to his first meeting. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes. And, and so if there are no other questions of staff, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. This is vacation case. It's case number VA 2018-01. This is a public hearing on a petition for a vacation of a portion of a 20-foot platted sanitary sewer easement on property located at 616 East Douglas, Andover, Kansas. And I think this site is also known as the Sunflower Elementary School property. So, we have an application and some exhibits. Everything looks in order here. Les, if you'd care to enlighten us on anything that may not be apparent?
This easement is specific to sanitary sewer. It was platted with the original school back in 1999 or 2000, and with the latest addition to Sunflower Elementary School. They're expanding the building to the north onto what would be this easement. They'd like to vacate that portion of the easement, and they will install a sewer manhole at the end of the easement, and the remainder will either be relocated or abandoned.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll move on to the agent and applicant if they have anything to add to this seemingly straightforward vacation case.
Good evening. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. I don't have anything to add, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank, thank you. If there's no additional questions of staff or the agent, I guess there doesn't appear to be any deliberation necessary for this.
I'd make a motion. We approve the request, approve the petition as requested.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. Motion by Lynn Heath and second by Mr. Schnaber. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
For this next item, I will recuse myself and turn it over to the vice chair.
Thank you. Item number six is the review for approval of the Cornerstone Eighth Edition Final Planned Unit Development Plan. And the, Les, has all the information been answered that we, that was discussed at the subdivision meeting earlier?
Yes, we, we cleared up the issues on the building setbacks in the subdivision committee meeting, and we've had some discussions with the engineer about the sanitary sewer location since the subdivision committee meeting, and we think we're in agreement on a route that will both satisfy the needs of the school and the subdivision, and allow maintenance vehicles to service the lot.
Okay. Les, could you briefly go over, maybe for my benefit, as much as the new planning commissioners, what are we essentially looking for when we're approving a final PUD like this?
Well, this is a part of a mini-staged, 505-acre planned unit development. So roughly, this subdivision has been laid out since the first preliminary plan in 2000. Over time, things change as the market changes, as, for instance, the property was sold to the school. The plat was changed just slightly, but it's generally in compliance with the original plan to have plus or minus 10,000 square foot lots within the single-family neighborhood of Cornerstone, have a segregated commercial corridor along Andover Road and school site. So this is the final stage, which a lot of your actions on zoning type, type of applications are more, foster is the correct word, legislative, in that there are a lot of factors to be considered before an application is approved. This is a plat. It's a right. If all of the conditions are satisfied in the subdivision regulations and the planned unit development, then a person has a right to file this final plat and create new lots.
Yep. Takes a lot more work for these than it for us than the other ones.
Any questions from the members?
Nope.
I think Jason Gish is here from MKAC to present if necessary.
The applicant have any comments who want to approach at all?
Jason Gish with MKAC. Good evening. I think Les touched base on the, on the things that we're trying to work through and make sure we get finalized. So unless you have questions regarding those details, I don't have anything further to add, but be glad to answer anything.
I don't have any further questions. Anyone else?
This area up here with the second cul-de-sac, is that a future? Well, it doesn't show it up there, but when that street goes to the right, up at the top, it shows here a, a street with a cul-de-sac on it.
Yeah, I can, I can maybe answer that if you don't mind me grabbing this easel and looking at that plan. I'm going to show you kind of the big overall picture.
Okay.
If that's helpful. We'll see how well you can see it.
This is what we talked about in the...
Oh, I see. Subdivision?
Subdivision. Because of where the sewer lines were going, they had it proposed to go along here, while they wouldn't have access because of the school that would be in that property right there.
We used to have little things here. I don't see them anymore.
So if I can stand here and everybody can hear me. So the part that we're plating is this up here. Those lots right there, and the portions that we don't have platted yet, our final plat, or rather, kind of include that portion there and this little piece right here.
Yep. That's what I was...
So is this the one you're...
No, it's the one up above.
Straight above that one.
Right there.
Okay.
It's on, it's on a drawing here, but it's, you know, it was shaded.
So, so what, what our client asks us to do is they're trying to expand this market here, this, they refer to it as copper crest, and, and it was kind of going to be finished at this location, and since they've sold this piece, they were looking for opportunity, and that's what Les referred to. These things are always shifting and changing, and, and so we try to do the best we can, but they really didn't want to come past. There's a hedgerow.
Yes.
That exists on the property, and it kind of acts as a nice defining edge, and so they wanted to keep this market north of there and try to kind of fit it into this edge against the school, and then transition, at least at this time, we think, that these cul-de-sac, or this, this street here and this cul-de-sac here, we think that those are going to reflect what, what this, this area is here. So, this street used to come down in a concept, if I see it through the earlier PUD, which I probably have that as well. But anyhow, because of this request, we, we're trying to make the layout work based on that, and this is what our owner liked, and we're trying to sort out with everyone. So that's our best guess of what the future holds.
Gotcha.
It's getting smaller and smaller, so it should get clearer and clearer and less, less options.
Eric, to give you an idea, this is a PUD that was originally filed in 2000, and this is the sixth amendment to the PUD. And the amendments are more about changes in zones of parcels, rather than small changes in alignments of streets or lot configurations or so forth. So six times this thing has had kind of an out-of-frame change.
Right.
But through time, it's reflected changes in the, in the market. Like he says, there are two or three different price ranges of houses out there, and they try to keep a steady flow of lots out in front of the builders in each one of their price markets.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That helps.
To give you an idea, Green Valley.
Yeah.
Started in 1980. There are over 30 amendments to that PUD to date, and there are still two parcels left to be developed.
Yeah, there was still some of that going on when I was on.
Any other questions?
Nope. That sounds good.
Sorry, I set all that up. I just...
That was fine. Thank you.
I was on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless there's any other comments or questions, I need a motion for this.
All right. And Chairman, I approve the, make a motion that we approve the Cornerstone Eighth Edition Final PUD as presented to us.
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, turn it back over to you.
Hey, thanks so much. That leaves just a handful of items left on our agenda. The Andover Unified Development Manual update from Foster Design Associates LLC. Looks like we're looking at the subdivision regulations this time.
Yes, we are.
Good.
For Eric, the Unified Development Manual is an effort on the part of the city to take the zoning regulations, the subdivision regulations, site plan review, and various other things like building and construction code and floodplain management, and put them all in one place so that it's a, a single source of information for developers who want to develop a project in Andover. We've been working on this for eight months, nine months, quite a while now.
Quite a while.
At our last meeting, we brought for your review the signage section of the zoning, the definitions, and a couple of others, and the site plan review portion. This month, we're bringing you the subdivision regulations, and we hope next month to bring you the balance of the zoning regulations, at which point we'll be close to bringing you the entire document for your review and recommendation to city council, we hope. But for tonight, the subdivision regulations, you should have a copy in front of you. They're really not substantively different from what you already have. They have been translated to plain English. They've been reorganized in a small degree to make them a little more clear and user-friendly, but the, the content is pretty much the same. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I'm, I'm not sure we need to go over it in any great detail. Les, Les, is there any, are there any particular points that you think we need to clarify for the board?
No, I don't think there are any specific points. You'll notice that the definitions are considerably more than there have been in the past, and that there are a lot of illustrations of setbacks and areas and so forth to make the regulations maybe a little bit more intuitive for the layperson.
If you look at the table of contents, you'll note that there's two entire articles devoted to long, detailed descriptions of everything that has to be included in a drawing for a preliminary plat or a final plat. We've also given its own, the required improvements its own article, since that is something that people want specific information on, and I want it to be very clear. The design standards are pulled out in their own article, and the other articles pretty much reflect what is, what has always been there. The definitions have been pulled out and put into the unified definitions for, that serve zoning subdivision and site plan review, which will be a separate section in the Unified Development Manual. And honestly, I don't really have much more to say about it. We're here to answer any questions you may have, and as always, if you think of something later, let Les know, and he will pass it on to us if we need to revise something or add something. But this has been worked on for quite some time now, and we think we've refined it to the point where it's ready to go.
Page 18, up 72. This is under, I believe, the contents of a preliminary plat.
Yep.
It talks about aerial photograph.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know, is that something new, Les?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we're, we're wanting our applicants to depict the preliminary plat over the top of aerial as part of the overall schema?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, then, in place of an aerial photograph, could they use Google Maps or something similar to that to show the property, or?
We don't specify where the aerial comes from.
Okay.
So they can use the GIS aerials that are available, or if they wanted to do it over, if it was a sufficiently small project, it might be simpler to do it over a Google Earth map. Or they could fly their own dinghy.
A drone.
Drone.
Those things.
I got some pilots that could help you out.
Yeah. I don't see that's a, yeah. That's a good...
Possible solution.
Yeah.
It's not as if it's, if we're asking something hard to find anymore. Aerials are easily available, so...
Understood. I just wanted to clarify that was something new, and that's something we need to be acknowledging when we do have new applications come through.
We find it very helpful in having the full context.
Sure.
Where a location is, the road names, adjacent structures, adjacent subdivisions.
I completely agree. It's a...
Is there a date that is required with how current that particular photo is?
You know, Google is up to date very frequently. Butler County is doing a much better job now in keeping up with recent aerial photography.
One thing I might suggest is it says it must be recently available. I guess, I guess it's a, that's the desire, is that's its current imagery, and I think that maybe is the intent there.
Is must to...
I, you know...
I mean, most, we deliberately left it a little fuzzy by saying most current instead of giving a, you know, within the last year or whatever.
Yeah.
Because different areas are sometimes flown at different times, so if we change that must to should, which is a little more gentle, is that...
It, I don't know if that's anything to die on, but it's, it's just, you know, for sure.
Well, it does say the most recently available image, so I mean, out in the county, that could still be a couple of years. It's still correct, so it depends on how you interpret it there.
Yeah. Available is fuzzy enough. Available to whom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On page 21 of 72, I noticed, I just want to review items 3A through D, or I guess 3A through C really is. Just at what point the plat is deemed null and void. I know that some instances, it takes a little bit of time for various reasons to get things kind of wrapped up, but I guess 60 days is, is a long enough or short enough of a term that is deemed no good anymore. I guess where I was going, maybe is that too short? Question mark, or should we?
That is 60 days from the acceptance by the governing body.
Okay.
So at that point, everything should be in order.
Should be done, yeah. Yep. Okay.
Chairman, I found that the longer you leave it out there, the more little changes get made.
Sure.
And you don't even know about them.
Sure.
So long ago is why I started writing 60 days in to get it into the recording.
That makes good sense.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add something to what Deborah was saying? There aren't a lot of changes in here for two reasons, for the reason that the statutes, where you were following them anyway. In other words, there was about four or five statutory changes, and you have to automatically follow them anyway, whether they're in here or not. And the developers knew about them, and so there was no change ever made as an amendment, but now they're in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to briefly point out, and I think all, most of you are aware of it, but I don't know if everybody who watches this, when we adopt these rules, there are abilities to, I guess, take exception or vary the rules, but in order to do that, someone has to go through a process on, I don't know, I can't come up with something off the top of my head. I guess a setback would be one, one thing, or how close you want to put a building. And essentially, they come to you and say, is it okay if I have an exception or a variance to these rules? In fact, that's quite a few of our cases that come in front of us, and could we just talk about a little bit about that process and how we try to apply those rules to that?
Well, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and the Planning Commission both have some latitude to approve variances, whether it's through formal application for a variance, or in the case of the subdivision regulations we're talking about tonight, the Planning Commission can take exception to its own standards if it deems necessary.
Okay.
You know, occasionally, we'll come on to that, that odd scenario where maybe cul-de-sac length needs to be longer than the maximum because it, it just fills out a parcel of land, the topography lends to that, or street width needs to be varied, or an angle or something. Those can be varied by the Planning Commission. The zoning instances that Mark was talking about, maybe building setbacks or lot coverage, height dimensions, those sort of things go through a formal process at the Board of Zoning Appeals. But there's, there's always that relief there somewhere in the process.
Now admittedly, it's supposed to be a pretty tight standard of when, when we do those things, and there's some rules to follow, so it's, it's not easy to do, and these should be the guidelines that we should stick to the most, but I just, every time we go through this, I want to make sure people understand that we do have a little flexibility. It's not like we just pass rules and never consider them again, but the Planning Commission's charge is to take a good, critical look at anything that would be an exception to this.
And we should, should be able to do that, because, you know, the number of years I've been on here, there have been some situations come up that we've had to adjust accordingly.
Mm-hmm.
And so you, you need to have that ability to do that.
What are you going to say?
I was going to say, just to add to what Les was saying, certain things, as he indicates, have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, lot size, things like that. But other things, as he illustrated, say the length of the road, they're running into a floodplain or something like that. Keep in mind, it's a modification. In other words, so we don't confuse the Planning Commission and BZA, whatever you all do is a modification. The BZA is a variance.
Another item I saw, 33, page 33 of 72, the grading plans. And I know that this is under a final plat. I know that we haven't probably seen enough grading plans as a body, and I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about that as a, as a requirement to the final plat. Is that something we're supposed to be reviewing, or I presume yes?
Yes, we've added that to the list and clarified it quite a bit. The modern building regulations require that a survey be done of the lot, including the drainage way on the lot, and the height of the foundation and so forth. This final plat, master plan, kind of tees that up. It sets all of the standards so that when it comes time to build, the builder knows how high he's got to build his house and what he's got to maintain for drainage.
Okay. On, switching gears to improvements, onsite improvements, page 37, under electricity and communication, item 1... under electricity and communication, item one, no overhead utilities are permitted in urban-type residential subdivisions. I might add that we add permanent, no permanent overhead utilities are permitted, because I know that, I know, for example, this subdivision, the Butler Rural Electric installed some power poles that are on a, I think, on a temporary basis. So, maybe it would be beneficial to add the word permanent to this item E, E one.
We can do that.
Yep, that's a good point.
Anybody else read this?
No one has your experience.
Oh, okay. I know. I'm just razzing you guys.
I know.
You guys are awfully quiet, and I'm the only one talking.
You're doing fine.
Well, if it was the regulations I wrote, I could do that.
All right. Well, I think that those are just some, some details I wanted to just clarify, and.
Could I, could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Just from my own knowledge, is, is this documented? It's certainly huge in scope. Is it multiple documents pulled together? Or is it one that existed that's being brought up to date?
It's.
Or all of the above.
All of the above.
It's multiple documents that are being brought together and brought up to date.
Nineteen of them.
Yep.
Nineteen different documents and something like a hundred and forty policies? And Deborah, we're up to how many hundred pages now?
Closing in on four hundred, but it's all, when it's done, it's all now searchable and full of links and tables and illustrations. So, it's probably nearly as many pages as all the original documents put together, but it's much more clear and usable and user-friendly than it used to be. Yes, much more agile.
If you could imagine trying to correlate all of those, if you were a developer or a builder, trying to keep track of nineteen different documents and all of those different policies, now it'll be in one place. And, and if a word comes to your mind, you can search that word and find out how many times it was used.
Quite an undertaking. Thank you.
Yep.
These highly knowledgeable people did all this.
Yeah.
I'm amazed it's only taken eight months.
Thank you. That's how I feel about it.
It's definitely going to be an improvement having everything at your fingertips, and it'll be really nice.
Well, we are closing in. I, I know Mark especially is grinding his teeth over there, but we're getting closer. Next month, we hope to bring you the zoning regulations that I hesitate to say for sure, only because we've had colds and flu and whatnot, and Les isn't feeling too well himself, so, I don't know, we'll see.
So, could it be possible? I'm sorry, could you just repeat one more ti- time? When we get all of this put together, the processes, there's a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission?
Right.
And if they approve it, then it goes to the council for adoption? Is that essentially it, or?
Yeah, we've been, we've been asked to not bring you the whole four hundred pages at once, and bring you parts, which is what we're in the process of doing now. So, as we go through all the parts and eventually get each part reviewed and semi-approved, at that point, we'll bring you the entire document for your official review and approval, and, excuse me, adoption. And then you will make a recommendation, we hope, to the City Council to approve it. And at that point, it becomes adopted by ordinance.
They'll have several hearings, though.
Yeah.
Within them. In other words, the advantage of that is that if you make a change, you don't want to make it for four hundred pages or something. You make it for a reasonable section of it. There's not nineteen hearings, though. There are just a few.
All of these documents will appear to the public to be one. But they, for state law reasons, building code reasons, they have to be adopted independently by different ordinances. But in the end, they all come together into this one seamless document that's available online.
Let's just use the example of, you've got a floodplain regulations. Rarely ever changes. But if you put it in here, every time you change everything else, you have to notify the state and the federal group that you've changed your floodplain things, even though you haven't done anything. So, they're separate. They're a separate thing and will not be part of your public hearing. It'll, excuse me, it'll be a separate public hearing for it, and you don't have to worry about it afterwards.
Is that the only condition or the only example? Or would there be something else?
There's several.
Are there? Okay.
There's several. You really, it's just best to leave them alone. If you put them together.
The building code, for example, every three years, there's a new building code. So, it would be adopted independently so that we wouldn't have to go back into all the public hearings for zoning, when all we're doing is adopting the latest model building code.
Right.
I presume, and I think, think we've talked about this in the past, since this is going to be one unified code, when you are searching for setbacks, you may find it in, I'm using just setbacks as an example, building setbacks. You might find it in your subdivision code, but you'll also find it in your zoning code. And, and one of those places, it might be more specific to what those setbacks look like and what they mean and so forth.
There'll also be linked, interlinked indexes for both the zoning and the subdivision. When you do a, when you do a universal search, yes, the word setback will come up in several, several places.
Is there one that would take precedence over another, like you were saying, in, in one area or another? Does one come up first and direct you there, or?
No, you gotta meet all of them.
Page one.
You meet the most restrictive one.
There you go.
Whenever in doubt, just use those words. If anybody asks you a question, just say, "The most restrictive one."
I do, I do like some of the diagrams that you've provided, and I hope, I hope there's some more, even maybe more diagrams that'll be implemented in the, in the final document, so.
Yeah, the, the, there's really very few in the subdivision. Zoning is heavily illustrated, heavily. Next month.
That's only going to help.
Both illustrations and pictures.
Yeah. Well, if there's no other questions, we thank you for all your arduous tasks that you're going through here and, and helping us as a community get through that, and really appreciate that.
All right, well, and thank you for your, your input. I already fixed the, the thing you wanted me to fix.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have one more item here, or two member items. I'd like to welcome Eric. And it looks like we have another gentleman that's going to be joining us as well.
Brandon Russell.
Okay.
Other, the last, to complete the eight. I don't know how often we've done that, but.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
Well done.
With that, any member items, Eric?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Threaking from a large straw.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to join. I do.
Yeah, and don't, don't hesitate to ask some senior members here that have been on the Planning Commission for a long time.
I, I won't. I'll jump in with both feet.
Okay.
I definitely will.
Certainly.
One of the things I recommend is, if you have, if you can, is join the subdivision meeting. And, because it is, you, you get to sit around in a relaxed atmosphere and talk about this stuff, you know? Then you have guys coming in and explaining things in more detail than they can hear them.
Probably helps you get up to speed much quicker, I'd imagine, huh?
It is. It's a good learning tool.
I bet. Thank you.
Gary?
Les, how are we doing on the amphitheater? I know we talked about that, I think, last month.
We did the substantial completion inspection last week, and just have a few items to button up and be ready for those late spring concerts to start up.
Great. Thanks for the update.
Yes. Is, is there going to be some sort of, kind of, a junior opening of the amphitheater to make sure the PA works and all that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're looking for a, a grand opening in early May is the, the current projection. I can't say much more than that, because we're still working on nailing down the act, but.
Well, it looks great over there.
It does. Nice job. Yes, it does.
I don't have any items.
Fresh out? Nope, no more.
Stephanie? All right.
Nothing, nothing.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
We have a motion by Lynn.
I'll second it.
And second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.